I'd like to call this regular council meeting and work session to order. Everybody please stand for a moment of silence and let's remember all of those who passed away during the month. Please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome back, Mr. Dillon.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, welcome back.
Mr. Gerard.
Here.
Ms. Cohen.
Here.
Ms. Ribericas.
Here.
Mr. Gorman.
President.
Mr. Quichic.
President.
Mr. De Giuseppe. You know what, I'm gonna go first tonight because I have a lot of things on my agenda to do. So, first of all, talking to Casey from Little League and talking to Mr. Chicoletti from the high school. We talked to the superintendent and the athletic director. And right now, everything is a go for all outdoor sports down at the fields. So it looks like there's gonna be baseball this year. The other thing is, I don't know if you've been paying attention to the baseball fields, but the Borough Crew, along with Freddie Cullen from the high school, has been redoing the fields. We talked about this last year, and it was about 20-some thousand or 30-some thousand, I think, right, Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
To have a company come in to regrade these fields and try to get the humps out and all. We've been doing it all in-house, and it just shows, with, you know, two groups working together, how much you could get done and how much you could save the taxpayers. So I just wanted to bring you up on the fields right now with that, so if anybody wants to know what's going on. Well, somebody for public participation?
He's here for no public comment.
Okay. All right, any questions on the baseball fields? All right, next thing, down at the basketball courts. So everybody knows that the fence that's around the basketball courts is being destroyed. They cut holes in the fence just to go across, I guess, to get their ball, or they don't want to walk all the way around to go home. So they're putting, they cut the fence open, walk through it. The other thing it does, it collects a ton of trash that's on the courts. So we would like, if the Borough's okay, if the council's okay with this, I was down there evaluating the courts with Kevin Evert, we would like to take all the fence down around the courts, cut the poles. And this way, when we have the courts redone, it's a lot easier. We can run the street sweeper and get a lot done. So if nobody has a problem with taking the fence down, I'm gonna tell Kevin to proceed with removing the fence.
Should we plan on replacing it ever?
No.
Okay.
It's just, it's a trash collector and the kids are not maintaining it that good, so.
I'd like to say something about that. When I'm over there with the planning and stuff, I notice that it grabs a lot of the trash. Shirley and I always like pick it up, but, and so do other people, they go over and pick it up. But you're absolutely right about that, the fence, you are.
Any other questions on the courts? We're waiting for some prices to come in. We're trying to do some stuff in-house, buy the material and sub out the pavement to somebody else so we could try to save some money without going out with engineers and trying to run on bids, which is just gonna drive the cost another $20,000, $30,000. So we could do it the way we're trying to do it. I think we're gonna save the taxpayers money and we're gonna get a good job. We're trying to pave the, our basketball court area, repaint all that backwards, put new rims up. That was part of this thing we talked about prior. And by the way, we did receive the check for the rent, the balance of $150,000. That check did come in and we said we would put that towards certain things in town. So that's something that, if everybody wants to know, that check did come in and it cleared our account. The other thing is the bridge that's over, you know, the tennis courts that's all rotted out, a couple people, boards are breaking. We wanna move forward with that, and again, we're trying to get bids from somebody, and we're trying to buy the material and have them do it. We had an engineer already design the pane, so we paid, I think, $1,500 for somebody to do that. So that looks like it's gonna be moving forward as soon as this, we had a bad February. So if we didn't have a bad February, a lot of this stuff may have been done by now. But that's also on the radar to get done. The other thing is down at the park, down at the river, we have our guys down there replacing a lot of benches. A lot of people are saying that they're, you know, they're busted up and the kids are breaking them. So if you go down there, you'll see that we're working on that. Again, this is all stuff we wanted to have done in February, beginning of March, but because of all the snow. On the path, we're trying to replace all the areas on the path that are bad. So the one near Wawa's already been fixed and a couple other sections been fixed. And again, we're doing a lot of this in-house. Our guys are digging them up and stoning everything, and then RNS is coming in and they're doing the paving. So they're working with us to try to save money by doing some in-house and subbing some of it out. Any questions on anything so far? Mr. Devine.
Yeah, just, what is it, do we have a timeline for the basketball courts?
We're trying to get everything done by the end of April. Is that good?
Yeah.
That's, I mean, look, can it go an extra, could it go into May? We don't know. It all depends with these bids come in and these prices. I'm hoping we can get it all done without going out to public bid, because that's gonna slow everything down. It's gonna cost us a lot more money.
What's the major cost gonna be?
The, oh, wait. The other thing is the street sweeper we had fixed last year, we spent over $18,000 to fix it. This year, it needs about another $18,000 in work. I have their proposal here. I've been in the Borough a lot, trying to help out any way I can while Mr. Dillon was out. So Kevin Evert, they brought it to the company that makes the sweeper. All the compressor hoses are rotted out, so old that we need a new sweeper. But we're trying to get this one fixed because we want to get it on the street, hopefully in the next few weeks. So that's gonna have to be an agenda item, I guess, to spend $18,000 to repair the sweeper. Any questions on the sweeper?
Yeah, what's the brand new one cost?
About $350,000, which we're gonna try to order this year and have it for either the end of the summer or, you know, for the beginning of next year.
Is that one of those, is that an item that we can get with the?
State bid list?
Yeah.
Yes. And the company that's fixing it is also the same thing. Well, people are having a hard time hearing the.
Colleen and Comcast.
Comcast is having a problem.
Yeah, they haven't got the equipment in the room back there working right yet.
I don't understand how we can't get this resolved. We spent another $25,000, $30,000, and this is ridiculous anyway. Anybody that's home with Comcast, I apologize, but we're doing our best. Jim, we, I know you haven't been here, but we need to get Comcast on the. All right, for the street sweeper, the next thing is, again, doing some evaluations this week with Kevin Evert. We need to order a new lawnmower, they're 72 inches off the state bid list, or about $13,000 not to exceed. I'm gonna make that an agenda item. Our two new trucks came in, they're all lettered and everything down at the Borough yard. They'll be on the road shortly. They're waiting for, I think, the flashing lights and things like that to be put on them. The whole truck, I'll be handing the keys over to Mr. Chicoletti from the school board. Giving them a truck, a plow, and the spreader that's on the truck, so they'll have that pull up. Anytime questions, just stop me anyway, because I have a few more things. The bucket truck that we're trying to order, the RDA got us, we got a grant from the RDA for $102,502. The bucket truck that we want to order is $148,816. So the difference is $46,314. The reason we didn't ask the RDA for this $148 is because the truck that we have right now goes up to change streetlights, and inside the bucket, we didn't know it, they were standing on a bucket inside that to reach the light. The new bucket truck, if we order this one, will go high enough for them to change streetlights, but it also should be high enough to change the lights on the baseball fields. So I know it's gonna cost us almost another $47,000, but I'm gonna make that an agenda item tonight to vote on to order this, order this truck.
So which, the only thing that's wrong with it is that it doesn't reach high enough to get?
Now, our truck is shot.
Yeah.
I mean, it needs a lot of work, but thankfully, the RDA gave us $102,000. We're putting in $40-some thousand to make this work, so.
Who changes the light bulbs at the fields now?
Bell, or Armory.
So we'll be able to save that money.
Yeah, I mean, unless there's something major that we can't fix, and then they'll go there to do it.
Reimbursement on that truck too?
Yeah, we're gonna try to, we're gonna give the truck to the school district for them to do some stuff around their fields. But if it's not worth it, once it's evaluated, then we'll trade it in, we may get something for it. So come on. Part-time help. Kevin said that last year they had three kids, college kids, that were going to college or were in college. I'd like to authorize Kevin and Mr. Dillon to bring them back. They all were very good workers last year in the Borough, was happy with them. We had some people call and say, you should give other kids an opportunity. But I think with this COVID and all, do we have time to train people and spend more time? Where these kids are experienced, so I would, if nobody has a problem with that, I would really like to bring them back. And I, Kevin said he may need an extra guy, so we may end up with four part-timers instead of three. The other thing is, Mr. Dillon was contacted by Danielle Webb, who runs the soccer CYO program for St. Mark's, asking if they can use the fields. I have no problem with anybody using our fields. If it's starting to open up, they still need to follow the guidelines for CDC. And we told them, as long as CYO is going to approve this, I'm sure in the fall we'll work with them. So that's something they wanted some guy to answer and move forward. If you notice the door that's sitting here against the railing and the new opening in there, I stayed here with Johnny Driscoll the other day and helped him frame in that opening, because this glass door can't be put back. Nobody can seem to fix it. We had a lot of people out. It's a shame because it's an expensive door. But to put a new door in and all the parts, we're getting prices anywhere between $7,000 and $10,000. So I'm gonna put on the agenda tonight to have Mr. Dillon authorize a new door not to exceed $10,000. Just to let everybody know at home, their tax bills they may receive today. There's been a problem, problem in animal everything. The trades got held up in Philly, so they were running a week or two behind. It seems like today, a lot of people did receive their tax bills or opened, everybody did. If they didn't, they should be getting them any day now. And if you look at your tax bill, the taxes are gone down 11%. So anybody that says they're not going down, they are going down. Just look at your bill, the mileage was 57.89 mils. It's now 51.39 mils, which is difference, which was the debt service, is 6.5 mils. That's 11% reduction in taxes. I don't know anybody in Old Bucks County that had their taxes reduced. So I just want to clear that out. If anybody says, oh, my building, you go down there, behind there, look at your bill and you'll figure it out that you are seeing an 11% on your bill.
Now, does that include the five mils that we gotta get from Bucks County?
That's the same, well, our taxes every year were, we were at 57.89 mils, right? That's with the 5% included.
Okay, with the 5%.
We didn't raise taxes. Like, we didn't go in and say, we're raising your taxes five mils, but we're lowering them, you know what I'm saying? It's this 57 point, you look at your budget.
No, I'm saying, you're just including the five, extra five mils that we get every year.
Pardon me?
You're just including the extra five mils that we get every year from the county.
The money that we're lowering is debt service. We're lowering the debt service, which lowers your taxes by 11%. It's a little over 11%, but I'm not gonna get into it, okay? I'm gonna try to meet Wednesday night with the members of the school board for this meeting. Lorraine seems to be free Wednesday, Greg's free Wednesday, and I have a call into Chick and the group over there. It's gonna try to, we're gonna try to meet by when here one night this week to get that over with. The other thing is, I don't know how you realize, but I think people are starting to, I don't wanna use the wrong word, but I think people are starting to not realize that COVID's still around. And I think you really need to realize how bad this is and how it's spreading. And there's a lot of people in town right now that I'm talking to that are either sick or in hospitals. I already lost a couple members of my family to COVID. And I have another family member in the hospital with COVID right now that's pretty sick. So just wanted to let everybody know, this isn't a joke and you need to take it serious. So, you know, I know baseball's gonna open up and things like that. I don't know if we're on the right track with this or not, but I don't wanna tell people what they can do and they can't do, but I think we really need to take every precaution you can to realize, don't take this for granted. And the last thing I wanna mention is that, I don't know if anybody knows, that Jeff Nannan has been running a, it's not a prayer group, it's a group at St. Anne Church, and it's been pretty successful. And next Thursday, St. Joseph's Day, they're doing a, Father Mooney's doing a mass, and the homeless is, he's the referee for the NBA. I'm trying to think of his name.
Joe something.
Yeah.
Crawford.
Anyway, it's gonna be, if anybody wants to attend in town, it's seven o'clock.
It's for men, it's for men though, right? Men only, men only?
I don't know if it's men only, but I don't think so.
I believe it is.
Steve Javi.
Just saying.
That's on the top of my.
Steve Javi.
So they say he's pretty good, so if anybody's interested in town that wants to attend.
Can you repeat the time in the day again?
Seven o'clock next Thursday. And it'd be nice to come out and support it so everybody, you know, he gets a nice crowd in there. Okay, Lorraine.
Okay, I have two things. One is, I got a call today from Nick Lolli. He'd like to have a ceremony on Memorial Day at the Veterans Memorial, and he wanted to make sure that with COVID and everything, he can follow through on it. So can you answer that question, Mr. De Giuseppe?
Yeah, Lorraine, I'm gonna say, just like we're saying with everything else, I have no problem, or the council has no problem, especially for the veterans to support that. I guess they just gotta remember to practice social distancing no matter what we do.
Okay. Somebody just texted me and said they can't hear it and they have fios. So I'm just telling you that. All right, then, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Then, there were two accidents in 35 days' time on Trenton Avenue between Cleveland and Roosevelt Street. So I wanted to see if the chief, here he comes, hang on a second. Hi.
Hi.
Can you see if Sergeant Faith could take a look at, if there could be another stop sign put in between Roosevelt and Cleveland?
Mr. Dillon sent that information to us, and we did an evaluation.
Okay.
We looked into the last several years of accident data. It doesn't call for it based on the accident data. Those two collisions were both driver error. Not the stop sign would have prevented it.
Okay.
Now, that doesn't say that a stop sign's, you know, not warranted in, that would be your decision, but accident data doesn't.
Well, I wanna, I wanna tell you something about that. Because there's two blocks, people speed up a little bit. The road is on a curve. If you, if you come this, like, come this way, you go down there and try it. The road is on a curve. If they do that again, like, if my cousin's truck wasn't there, her house would have been hit, okay? So can you just, just look at it for me?
It's not our, it's, we don't, we have no objection to it.
So we don't have, okay, all right.
No, I mean, we're not objection to it. What we do when Mr. Dillon sends us a request like that is we look at the accident data. And I just wanted to let you know, it's not a T-bone accident that was caused by a stop sign. However, stop signs are traffic calming devices. If council wants to put a stop sign up there, of course, we have no objection to that.
Okay. So what do I have to do to get the stop sign put?
You need to study it.
That's what I just said. Who said no?
That's a different type of study. The, Mr. Dillon has to get the engineer to do a study.
Oh, really?
Handout provides that we shouldn't put up a stop sign unless an engineer recommends it. And understand, stop signs are not meant to stop speeding. That's not their intent. But the police basically said, they don't think there's a basis for it, but they don't object. Our next step is we would have the engineer to look at it.
What's the cost of something like that? Is it a lot?
Trying to think the last one you did.
I'll, I'll get your price.
Okay. But like I said, the, the street is on a curve, and if, if somebody, and, you know, people are looking at their phones while they're driving, somebody's, they go right at her house, and it's just very upsetting, you know? And that's, let me see, wait, one more thing. I wanted to possibly talk about maybe us council members possibly giving our, the money back that we get every month and put it into a, to help with the rec program. If we offered, and it's just something we could think about, you know? Putting it on the agenda and maybe, you know, giving back our money to the town, to the kids.
Our monthly stipend.
What, I'm sorry?
Our monthly stipend.
That's right, yeah. It's not a lot, but it could help.
$1,600 a month.
So it's something that we could discuss and, and, you know, come back maybe next month and.
I like the idea, Lorraine.
Okay.
Well, who would, who would get it?
The rec, the art, what we're working on, the rec, the kids of the town.
Oh, you're talking about the new committee that you guys are forming?
That's right.
That one?
Yeah. Or we could talk about it and we can, you know, put it, designate it to kids somehow. But I'm willing to talk about it as well, you know, to discuss it, how we would. But I think it wouldn't hurt to give it to the kids of the town.
So could this be something that we could donate to, like, the football program that Chris Chapman is?
No.
No, why?
I don't wanna discuss that with you. If you wanna talk to me about that, you can talk to me in the background.
I don't wanna go back and forth.
Isn't that kids in the Borough?
She made a statement, that's good enough. All right, so I have two more things I forgot to talk about, I'm sorry. One is Elm Street. If anybody looked at all the equipment that's out on Elm Street that Danucci brought in. Just so you know, that the RDA again went out to bid, he was the low bidder, and they don't have to take the low bid, but they elected to take the old, the low bid. But council still has to approve that work because there's a difference of about $35,000 if we can use the 50. That's an $85,000 contract. So right now, the, to take that down is $85,000. If we approve it tonight, we're hoping to get started maybe next week, the end of this week or next week. So if anybody wants to know why the equipment's there, the RDA gave him a notice to proceed with the understanding that we have to approve it, and there's no reason, I think anybody out here is going to vote no. But again, I have no idea how these are gonna vote, so that's why the equipment's in place. They had time to bring it, so they, they brought it in.
Can we ask questions about that now, or do you wanna wait?
No, go ahead.
Can I, can I finish? I have one more thing.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I didn't finish.
Go ahead, Lorraine.
What is happening with the convent, the St. Anne School and the convent?
The guy that bought it is fixing it according to plans.
To do what with it?
He's making four townhouses in the convent.
Okay.
I don't think how many units in the school.
Great.
Whatever council, whatever we approve, we're doing.
Okay, great, great.
We're only doing demolition at this point.
Okay. Okay, demo right now.
Yeah, the question I have is, so I was looking at the resolution for the low bid, says for $82,000 for the Elm Street. And then it has, and is that an additional $32,000 that will come out of the Borough, or is that?
The $82,000 was Danucci's bid. The RDA awarded a $50,000 grant towards that.
Oh, okay, so 50.
The difference from, if you subtract 50 from 82, is 32,000. That's what we have to come up with. Never miscellaneous defencings out there and things like that.
And what were, how many bids did we get for that?
Any, they went to the RDA.
Oh, okay, so the RDA didn't?
Oh, it's nothing to do with it.
Three bids.
Three bids?
Two, ten thirty something, one fifteen, this was clearly the last.
And are we going to be doing, this doesn't include anything that we're gonna do on Chestnut Street? We're not ready? Gotcha. Thanks.
Anything else with Elm?
Yeah, the only thing I got to say on Elm, the condition of those houses over there, it's an accident waiting to happen. The sooner we get them down, the better.
If you look out back, they, some of it's collapsing. That's why we put the fence around.
Yeah, we get.
They're unsafe even to go in.
Somebody gets hurt over there, it's gonna cost us a lot more than $30,000.
Absolutely.
That's why we had fence put up again on Elm Street. God forbid if they do collapse, hopefully nobody's near there. But we, we give him the notice to proceed tonight after the meeting. I think he may start this week, if not Monday at the latest. Tony, anything else on Elm Street?
No, that was, about what's called, am I allowed to get some, some railing at my mom's, or no? Is that done?
What do you want?
I would like to get some of that, the railing that's on her porch, turn it into something.
Let me talk to them and see if they can, I'm sure they can, without getting, somebody getting hurt.
Yeah, if you can.
If it's in the cement, they gotta pull it out, but if it's just screwed there.
Yeah, I'm not even sure. It's old school one, like, it's.
Let me talk to Danucci, if he could do it, we'll put it on the site.
Yeah, okay. Not, no big deal.
All right, I forgot also I had to read this. All right, I forgot also I had to read this email from Mr. Pezzit tonight. He says, "I apologize for not being at this evening's meeting. It is my daughter's fifth birthday."
Granddaughter.
No, this is from Greg.
Oh, sorry. I thought you said Mr. Pezzit.
Please note that while things remain difficult in the borough and everywhere in the country as a result of COVID, I am looking forward to coming, the coming months and years as I think we are in great position in town for a robust recovery. I am also encouraged by the American Rescue Plan, which is poised to pass Congress and be signed by President Biden. While the details are still to come, I look forward for the day in the near future where Mr. Dillon will be able to share with us how this bill positively impacted the borough. I will see you in April. Greg Pezzit. So he wanted to let everybody know why he's not here, and he just sent this email. If I were to read it for him tonight. Okay. Lorraine, you're done?
I am.
All right, there were some, uh, I've got some calls from the Plum Street Alley behind Buckley between Pine and Spruce. So I know that, you know, I don't know who was responsible, Mr. Dillon, but we were able to go there and patch up. I appreciate that. Next question I have, is there going to be something there that we will, are we ever going to pave that entire alley? Or is that just always going to be a patch, patchwork?
At the moment, they're just gonna be patched.
Okay.
I mean, we can look at it in terms of next year's budget, maybe.
No, I'm just, I just wanna, I appreciate you. So I know that we're talking about, you know, saving money and doing a lot of things and, and working with committees for, and we're talking about recreation. Is there any way, like, I know that we've discussed and asked for, you, you asked me, Ralph, of, you know, how much money would you need to do a Central Park idea? And I threw out the number two million. You know, that was just, just the number to throw out there because you're asking me for a number. Is this council willing to go out and get a loan for any amount to put towards a Central Park idea in that area of Elm Street?
I don't hear anything, so I guess not.
Okay, sounds like not, all right. So which leads me to the, the next thing, is that the, the things that we talk about, we talk about recreation, we talk about kids, we talk about things that we're gonna do, but we're not willing to put any money towards it. So we spent a ton of money when we built the Borough Garage. I mean, over three million dollars, probably a million and a half of that came out of taxpayers' money. Then when we refinanced the skating rink, we took a million dollars instead of putting it back in and paying the, the, the debt of the, you know, towards the, the, the balance of the skating rink that was owed, we took that million dollars that we refinanced and we, and we put it into a capital improvement, which wound up buying more houses on Elm and Chestnut Street. And then after we sell the property, the skating rink, then we take a loan out for another million dollars that we're going to use to, to buy up and demo Elm Street and Chestnut Street. So as much as we talk about, we wanna do things for recreation, the kids, there's nothing in it that we do. So we sold, we, we sold the skating rink for, you know, the, the taxpayers really lost seven million dollars on the deal. And I'm not blaming this council for, you know, making that deal because you guys didn't make that deal. But it's still, the ability, within four years, that skating rink would have been paid for and, you know, we, we could have used that as an asset, you know what I mean? Something that brings in money. But we sold it and we paid off our loan. But then we take that, that, that money and now we have a, a million dollar loan that we took out for a debt service that we're going to buy more stuff. And again, it's not about the kids, it's not about the residents of the, you know, of the town. But we talk about it all the time, but we're not doing anything to help them. So, you know, I, I just want, I just wanna say...
Say something, Tony?
Sure, go ahead.
I don't know what I'm missing, and I've been listening to you for a while, with recreation. I don't know what we don't have for kids. We have a baseball program, we have a soccer program, we have basketball, we have after-school programs for kids that don't wanna play sports. We have trips to different places, to take kids places. So I don't, when you keep saying we do nothing, what do you want, tell me what else we should be doing?
Well, I would like to see, I mean, that whole area.
But for what, a park?
Yeah, for any...
There's a Grundy's Park. What do you wanna do at Grundy's? What would you put there?
You could put, I mean, to me, at that park, you should have, those basketball courts should not be the way they are. Right? And I understand, I understand it's an election year and, you know, you wanna, you wanna make things look like they're, you're doing...
Tony, I'm not worrying about an election.
I understand you're not worrying about it. I'm just talking about...
I'm saying, that's stupid to bring that up, it's an election year.
It's the truth.
We sat here, we're trying to do what's right, we're trying to move forward. Nobody's playing politics with this thing. But you keep saying we don't do anything for kids. What else do you want us to do?
Well, if you let me finish, that's what I'm saying.
I wanna know what I'm missing.
So those courts should be, that should be a beautiful facility, right? That should be glass backwards with lights, two courts you don't even need. You put a, you know, you, you could put a, a skate park there for the other kids that aren't, maybe won't be basketball people. Put some benches out there for older people, they wanna play chess, or they wanna play checkers, or they just wanna hang out, sit, talk by the canal. It's just a, I mean, it's just a great area that I think that we do not utilize the best that we can. We, our focus is always Mill Street and the river. But, you know, as much as you, you guys love the river, it, you know, at, at a certain point of the day, I don't think it's very, you know, I don't feel comfortable having my, my kids down there. You know what I mean? And it, and it gets disgusting down there. And I, and...
Disgusting where?
Down the river, with all the stuff that's over there, people peeing all over the place and...
That's not right to make that statement.
Well, I watched it. What do you mean, it's not right, it's true. They do, what do you mean? Were you saying it's false? I watched it.
I'm not even gonna let you, let him hear what you're saying, look at it. What do you mean?
That I'm hearing what you're saying?
That's a disgrace.
What's a disgrace? The truth?
About our town like that.
It's not talking about, it's telling the truth of what's going on. I'm just giving you an example. We put so much time and energy there. I'm saying another place would be in the center of town, by the canals would be a perfect place. That's all I'm saying. You know, that's, that's all I have for my comments there for, you know, the rec. I just put it on the record, I don't feel...
I still don't know what we're missing, you didn't tell me, besides checkers.
What do you mean? There's tons of, there's tons of stuff that you could do down there. You're putting, you have, you have the area down there. You could put a wall there, you could have all kinds of stuff down there for kids to use. You know what I mean? Like, you can have handball, you could, you know, you can use a facility, you could put it, uh, you, you could put, um, an amphitheater, small amphitheater, that would be perfect for where the canal is. You got the perfect leading into, you could put some, uh, some, some picnic tables and things of that nature down there, right in between when you're going from the canal and you're cutting through that little grass area that's already canopied into where the track is. I mean, there's, there's a ton of things. But the idea is this, I understand that you guys don't like the idea, and that's it. You don't wanna, that's fine, but I don't feel that way. And like you said, it's the majority that counts. You guys have the votes to do what you wanna do. You feel, you feel that there are things for this community to do, and I'm telling you, they're not. I have kids that age, there's nothing, they walk, they walk the, the, uh, the, the spur line park, that's all they do. That's all they can do. What else can they do?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Growing up, what did you do?
What do you mean, what did we do?
What did we have back then when you were...
Well, we had, we had a recreation center. We used to go to, to the park. We, you know, they had stuff for us to do there. They had, you know, counselors in the summer that you participated. They, you know, it's kinda like what you connected to. So those, those kids that were your, kinda like your counselors or whatever, you looked up to, that you wanted to, so there's a connection to the town. That you wanted to be, you know, you want to be like these kids that were your counselors. You looked up to them.
We have that right now for kids.
You don't. No, you don't, where do you have that at?
Runney Foundation runs a 21st Century Program.
Yeah, well, they don't, who were the, who were the counselors that are over there running? It's just...
They're all teachers and all.
They're all teachers, they're good people. I'm talking about kids. I'm talking about a, a rec center that kids look up to. That's what's missing. You asked me, that's what it is. All right, um...
Anybody would love to have a riverfront town and is envy of what we have in this town, besides you.
You make it into some...
Talking about the riverfront with, with what's going on, but that's fine.
I don't understand, Ralph, it's not your...
Defense to that.
You should take a better...
When somebody says something negative about our town, and as a councilman, I have a problem with that.
So what should you, what do you suggest? Did I ignore it and act like I didn't see a guy peeing on a bench? Is that what you...
They can't do that at the basketball courts?
I've never seen it.
Oh, okay.
I've never seen it.
All right, yeah, what, what do you got next?
All right, so the next thing is gonna be some questions I wanna ask Mr. Salerno. We're talking about saving money any way that we can. Not going out to bid because we wanna save money, we wanna keep things in-house. But what I don't understand is, a councilperson asks for information that I believe that every councilperson in here has a right to know about what, how that skating rink was sold. That's number one. And we're going to spend money, so we, I don't remember us agreeing to hiring an outside council so we could spend taxpayers' money to keep a councilperson, elected official, from getting information. Can you explain why we would do that?
Number one answer, or you don't wanna answer? I don't care, everybody.
This, you filed an appeal, so this is in litigation, so we're not gonna discuss the request. The borough did not hire the attorney, the Recreation Authority did, okay? So this council at this point has nothing to do with that, that appeal or the right to know request. It's between you and the Recreation Authority, and we shouldn't discuss it any further.
Interesting. All right, so the next question I have for you is if, if you are the rec authority's solicitor and the borough solicitor, is that, isn't that a conflict of interest?
Listen, Devine, you're not listening, it's a...
Go ahead, I'm listening.
That was your allegation in your appeal, okay? And that's in litigation, so we're not gonna discuss it.
Okay, well then, let me put some other things out there since we can't discuss it. I just think that it's, it's crazy to me that Ralph D. Giuseppe, who is a council member just like, uh, just like me, or just like Mr. Gerard or Mr. Krotroci, they say that we're all even, is that correct? Mr. Salerno, this has nothing to do... This is not, nothing to do with, this has nothing to do with the appeal. So the question is, if we're, if we're all the same, why, how could Ralph D. Giuseppe sell and negotiate a four million dollar deal and not have any idea, and doesn't have to share that with any other of the elected officials? How does that happen?
Mr. D. Giuseppe did not sell the rink.
So he didn't?
The authority did.
Okay, so how did it get to the point? Because I wanna know, because I'm looking at the people who knew about it, and Ralph had a non-disclosure agreement with the person who bought the rink. Is that not making a deal with the rink? He's the one who negotiated, that's not selling the rink? That was the, that was, what does Mr. D. Giuseppe have to do with the authority?
I have nothing to do with the authority.
Exactly, so why are you making non-disclosure deals?
I tried to do the best I can for the...
Why, that's what I'm saying, why are you making non-disclosure deals with the person who's buying it?
Let me ask a question, just...
This is only one que, these are just simple questions, Mr. D. Giuseppe. If you wanna answer that question, I, why, why would you be able to do? If you have nothing to do with the rec authority...
I did exactly what I should, should have done as a councilman. Just like when you brought your basketball player into the rink, you walked him around, and if he would have gave you a number, you would have been in charge of that deal. You didn't bring that back to council. You didn't call the seven members of council saying, "I'm bringing somebody that, that wants to buy the rink," did you?
But, I'm sorry, are, right, are you... Are you turning this into something that...
No, I'm asking you a question, did you...
There was no number ever discussed, ever.
Did you bring somebody to sell one of the...
To look at the rink, yes.
Interested in purchasing the...
No, I, I said to look at the rink.
Who was he looking at it for, the paint?
To lease it, to rent it, to get some, to use some space out of it? To use some space for it? I mean...
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Salerno. Mr. Devine, I know you can't discuss it. His request for, that he asked for, did he get anything from this borough?
No, from the Recreation Authority, he received over three hundred pages of documents, and there are about fifteen pages of emails that were kept back under asserted privilege. He appealed that, and Recreation's Authority's attorney responded last week, and we're waiting for a decision.
So we gave him over three hundred pages, that's not good enough.
But you're tall.
But listen to me.
Yeah.
But now we gotta go hire outside counsel again, which is costing more money. But let's see what the end result is, then we'll discuss it.
All right, fair enough. And then, the, the other question I have is, it's very, it's, it's nice to see as the council president, you do have more sway over the solicitor than I do. Because when I ask questions, he told me we can't discuss it because it's litigation. I'm just saying, it's part of litigation. But I'm just saying, I'm just showing you the difference between them. All right, so let's get back on track. So let's talk about the people, since we had a council, we have a council member who had nothing to do with the rec authority. He was able to negotiate a four million dollar deal. So I'm gonna ask you, Ralph, this is not part of it. What did the, what did the negotiation start at that you're able to get the four million? What did you ask for it first?
I don't need to answer it, Tony.
Why?
I don't wanna answer, it has nothing to do with this.
It has everything to do with it.
All right.
So you, how much did it start out at?
Three million.
It started at three million, and you were able to get it to four?
Yep.
All right, so...
I did a good job, right?
No, I'm not saying you did a bad job. All I'm saying is, at what point, at what...
It was two point five.
All right, excellent. So at what point did you decide, "I'm gonna do this on my own, I'm not even gonna worry, I'm actually not going to tell any of the other elected officials, and then I'm gonna read off a list of the people who knew about it after you even had this non-disclosure." So you had yourself, it's not part of the rec, you had your son, you had Salerno, you had Dillon, you had Angie, you had Gene Williams, Jeannie Polyovko, Bruce Harris. These are just a handful of people that I know for a fact that knew before I did or anybody else on this council did. So how was that, how, how was that a, a non-disclosure?
You weren't selling the rink.
I'm just asking.
The authority was.
Okay, but you're the one who sold it. That's what I'm saying. You had, you're the one who sold it.
I sold it, it was mine.
You did, but that's what I'm saying.
Oh, you should be doing, you should be sitting here thanking me. But you're so jealous of me. It's really sad that you spend eleven or twelve years of your life worrying about what I do. You know how hard it is to hate somebody? You waste more time of your life, day in and day out, worrying about Ralph D. Giuseppe, what he does, what his son does, what his family does, who I associate with, who I talk to. You are so obsessed with what I do, it's sad.
No, it is.
I feel bad for you, I really do, that you put in your entire life, that every day of your life, all you do is worry about what I do.
I do.
That's, that's really pathetic when you think about it. I won't waste that much time on my worst enemy. You, you, when you hate somebody that much, it consumes every minute of your day. And that's, that's really sad, Tony, it really is.
All right, can I finish? All right, so let me, let me, let me talk about that point, okay? Number one, I spent maybe forty-five minutes looking over this work before I came here. So forty-five minutes of my time to have some information that I could share with council and the people of the borough is all I, that is all I take.
Been over nineteen hours this week.
So here, Ralph, I'm, I'm speaking, I didn't interfere with you, so if you could let me talk would be great. So, the forty-five minutes that I speak, you spend fifty or sixty hours in the borough. Do, now, ask yourself this, why would you spend so much time on a job that Mrs. Cullen is ready to give up and donate to recreation, which is a hundred and seventy-four bucks a month? Why would you put so much time and energy into something, is it that you love the borough that much?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. And the next part of it, so the next, so the next part of it is this, the next part of it is, so, jealous of what, what am I jealous of? That I want things to be fair, that I want things to make sense, that when I ran for, uh, office, that I wanted to be a part of, you know, uh, of a, a collection of officials that was part, working together, doing something that's positive for the borough? So what am I jealous of, that you get to run things and do whatever you want?
You never have a statement or you never had one meeting since you've been here that my name didn't come up and that I was doing something that you were unhappy with. So, you know, for twelve years I've been here and it doesn't matter to me what your opinion is of me or my family. I, I'm committed to this town, I love this town, I can move anywhere I want to move in Bucks County.
Yeah, but you could, but you can't make the deals that you make here in other places.
Make the deals.
Yeah, you can't, can you seriously, I've got a question for you. How many times have you went in front of the zoning board and been denied since you were the council president? How many times has that happened to you?
Never.
Never? Now, if you look at other people, if you went to a different place and you went in front of the zoning and you asked for the same thing you asked for here, I'm sure that you wouldn't be as successful. That's all I'm saying.
Do you know?
Because it's the truth, Ralph, I mean, let's hope, you guys could stick your head in the sand if you want, it's the reality, right? No, it is the truth.
Okay.
Alright, so, let's get back to these questions, so those people that were part of the non-disclosure agreement, none of them are elected officials.
Alright.
But they all knew about it, but we didn't. So, I didn't understand why none of the other councilmembers would even ask that question. Because the great news is, I got a deal I just made with the baseball fields. I just, I got a buyer for the baseball fields, I'm going to sell, I got seven hundred thousand dollars for the baseball fields. Lorraine, so all we gotta do is sign that, are you okay with that?
No.
Why not? Don't you, you don't have to be questioning, what I'm saying is this, that would never fly, that would never fly because it's ridiculous to think that one person can come in here and say, "Listen, I have a deal, this is great."
Well, let me tell you-
But we're not even going to talk about it, but we have to sign it because I had a non-disclosure agreement.
Say something, if you have seven hundred thousand for them fields, I'd be interested in selling them.
Okay, well we could do it.
We could put them somewhere else in town.
Fair enough.
So you have a buyer?
Yeah, we'll work on it.
Alright, bring it up.
Alright, so-
We could put houses there, that would be great.
Let me, let me bring up some of the things on there that I thought that don't make sense, they kind of are contradictory. Since Mr. Salerno's not going to answer, there'll be rhetorical questions, but, but I'll share them. Alright, so, the notes are a general obligation of the borough, right? So the notes for the skating rink, the money that we paid is the taxpayers' money that we paid for the, for the skating rink. The skate, the, the rec authority has zero, they have zero obligation. The, all the obligation, all of the ownership of that loan goes to the borough. Goes to the borough. So, how is it that a, an authority doesn't have the ability, they don't even have, they, they don't have to worry about it because they're not responsible for the loan? It's this council and the taxpayers that are responsible for it. So there's the first question I don't understand.
What's the second?
Alright, um, in one of the emails, it clearly states that Mr. Salerno is both the rec authority's attorney and the borough's attorney, so why he doesn't believe that that is a conflict of interest? I don't, I don't know, I don't- Who was part of the borough's team, Mr. Salerno, when negotiating for the authority, who was part of that team?
Mr. Dylan and myself.
That was it?
So who did the negotiating?
Mr. Dylan, mostly me and the other attorneys.
Did the negotiating?
Uh?
So you two are the ones that did the negotiating?
We got to a number, all they had to do was finish-
I know, I was talking to Mr. Salerno.
When you say negotiate, you mean to figure?
Yes, the numbers.
Figure, they offered us a certain amount and there were certain hurdles that came up regarding taxes and some other things. And they wanted us to pay some money to them and we refused. So we worked all that out and we agreed to the four million. That was, that was pretty much the basis of the negotiation, there were a lot of other issues.
Alright, so who-
That didn't affect the number.
So who made the confidentiality agreement?
The first day we met with the buyer, he said, "We do not want a lot of people to notice. We're willing to do a cash deal as quickly as we can." And Mr. Dylan and I, uh, worked with their team. The reason we weren't, reached out to Mr. Williams was because Grundy had to waive the deed restriction, which they were unwilling to do at one point. Mr. D. Giuseppe said he would call Gene and try to persuade them, which he did, and they waived it because that was, that was going to be a, a, a deal breaker, if that didn't get waived. So that's why Mr. Williams was involved, uh, obviously, members of the recreation board, uh, I don't know how much they knew. I know Mr. Harris, who was the president, was involved, he was here to pay a closing, to sign the documents. Who else did you say was involved?
Yeah, so who, so who was, who was the one who made the confidentiality agreement is what I want to know?
I just checked.
No, you didn't.
The owner said he wanted to be confidential.
With who?
This is played out.
Who did he make the deal with, is the question?
He told me he wanted-
There we go, so there's what I'm saying, so, the, the confidentiality agreement was with Ralph, not with you, not with Dylan.
It was with all of them.
No, it wasn't with all, you weren't even involved yet. I was asking, alright, go ahead, I'm listening.
You're wasting our time. We don't, we don't even owe you anything.
Are you a, are, are you, are you an elected official?
Tony.
Are you an elected official?
Oh, no.
I'm asking.
Let's do this.
Wait.
Ask your question, you'll get an answer.
I'm saying it, you got a lot of people chiming in-
I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
You could do whatever you want, all I'm saying is, you're the one that's chiming in and you're not telling none of you people.
You're not asking a question, you-
I'm talking, I just, I'm making a moment, you got people chiming in, that's all.
On it, stop acting like-
Stop acting like, listen, this is what you do, do your job, right? When people are at a, at a turn, you go like this. Mr. Crottochi, it's not your turn, can you please be quiet?
Well, we're not going to sit here and listen to you every time I'm going to bring this stuff up.
Alright, so here we go, so, so clearly, did you-
Hold up, hold up one minute, I'm going to give you all the time you need, okay? Michael, what do you have?
Um, I just have a couple things, um, I just wanted to mention that, well, wait a second, I'm, I'm not even finished.
I'm going to change it, what do you got, Michael?
What do you mean, change what?
I'm on the meeting, what do you got?
I'm not finished here.
I'm going to give you all the time you need.
Alright, fair enough.
So the, um, I wanted to mention about the facade program, the facade program that, uh, we began, um, and, uh, we were awarded, uh, to, to become recipients of it again for the third time. We began it and then COVID hit. What I just wanted to let people, uh, know is that it's back on track, obviously you could see some of the facades that are being, um, redone, uh, in particular, Market and Pond. So if you see a lot going on again, uh, that's why, uh, the state is now has representatives back in and they're able to, uh, process the paperwork. That's already been, uh, presented and awarded, uh, and they're just going through the motions along with the borough, uh, with Sally and, and Harb, so it's, that's a good thing, it's a good thing. We also have, um, a couple new businesses in town despite what had happened with COVID and the setback. I encourage you to, uh, you know, Walk Mill Street and see those, uh, businesses, uh, we have the tea shop, um, there's the dog, uh, the pet place, um, I'm, I don't want to forget anybody, but they're just two of, of, uh, four or five that have continued to, uh, come into the borough. Uh, the other thing is that, um, the murals, um, there's a mural, uh, we, as you saw, we had, uh, we, there was a second mural that was done back by the parking lot. What we've decided to do is in, um, working with a partnership with Raising the Bar, uh, and the banks, in this case, it's William Penn Bank, there'll be, uh, if you watch Facebook, what they're deciding to do is unveil it slowly, so it kind of becomes like these, um, cool information, like the, the commercials that you see to be continued. But continue to watch it because what's going to be unveiled is going to be pretty awesome. And, uh, that's one of two that are going to be, um, done and begin very shortly in the spring. And they'll be done for the, uh, pre, uh, summer. And lastly, uh, the scholarship program, uh, it continued last year. Uh, we went on board with the Rotary as far as doing everything the same dates. When we gave out the applications, when we collected the applications, of course, both, uh, organizations giving out separate, uh, awards for scholarships. But I just want to make it, uh, known that, uh, it is out again, it's out every year despite what's going on. Um, and that encourage any, uh, high school or current college students that, that as long as they live in the borough, they could apply for the, um, the, um, scholarship program. Uh, just to mention, we've extended the deadline as well, uh, Mr. Crottochi might want to mention it. It's extended to May twenty-first at five o'clock. The Lions, just so that you know, we're asking you to continue, once you get the application, it explains how to go about it, but we do ask you to mail it in as opposed to an email, and it's all explained on there. However, if something comes up, you give, uh, us a call or my name is on there, I'm part of the committee there, you can call me and by all means, I will work that out, thank you.
Thanks, Michael, Louis?
Yes, the Rotary, thank you, Michael, the Rotary is doing it again along with the Lions Club, so that will, hopefully give us some, uh, see some light again in the tunnel for some of these students. The, um, I wanted to thank, uh, once again, Lower Bucks Hospital with their COVID, uh, vaccination center, they have moved it down to this, to the, uh, the old, the former main entrance, they call it Founder's Hall and they, they redesigned that so they can take people there. Uh, so I want to thank them, I want to thank the Community College who has set up vaccination centers in all, all three campuses. You know, this is a, this is a great move and hopefully we can, you know, continue on and get more people vaccinated. Uh, I do have one question, I don't remember voting for a million dollar loan. I must have missed a meeting, but Mr. Devine kept saying we borrowed a million dollars, uh, we voted on that after the, the rink was sold and it just, uh, it got by me, so I'm sorry that I-
Louis, we, we didn't vote to borrow, we, we voted to, uh, accept our budget. In the budget, there was, uh, a one mil in case we go out to borrow money.
But we didn't-
It's in the budget, we didn't specifically say, right, we didn't do anything, it's just sitting there.
A million dollars is different.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Mr. Gerard?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Mr. Dylan, that's exactly what I was going to talk to you about, is Plum Street, Alex, there between Pine and, uh, I ride my bicycle down every once a week, it, it needs help. Okay, so if you could have Kevin take a look at that, I appreciate that. And Lorraine, as far as your ideas, good, good idea, however, the problem you're going to run into is everybody has a favorite. Tony has, uh, the football, you have your recreation, I personally have my brother's organization-
Which is what?
Athletic, uh, Illuminati Athletic Association of Bristol High, so, that's, that's where I would-
We can break it all up.
That, that's, that's what you would have to work on.
Yeah, you'd have to sit down and break it up.
Because everybody, I'm sure Louis has a favorite, everybody has a favorite, and that's, that's, that's where-
But would you be on board?
Uh, I would probably give some of my money, yes, I don't, I can't say I would give it all, but I, I would give a substantial amount to, to that organization, yes. Which I already belong to and do, go to the golf alley and stuff.
Thank you.
That's all.
Betty?
I have a few things, and I'll go as quickly as possible. I first want to apologize for not being here for several months, um, due to COVID and other health issues. I was not comfortable being here, um, but I'm getting there and I just feel like I watched from home and I did what I had to do with Mr. Dylan and I apologize for not being here. That being said, I wanted to recognize, like, I know we don't bring anybody in anymore and I understand totally why. But in November, I wanted to say, it doesn't go unmentioned when we have someone like Diane Cologne who always rounds up turkeys for the food bank on Mill Street, on Wood Street. And something that I saw on Facebook, which was amazing, which was Dante Reeves, Mars Dairy, and Antoine Lovelace, who had a truck, now they didn't only just do it in the borough, but they parked this truck by the Warren Snyder and it was full of Thanksgiving meals. And to see the energy these men had, people were riding by, they were stopping people, they were giving out dinners and they went from, you know, Bristol Township, Bristol Borough, they went to all the little towns. And I just think that when people get together and do things like this, especially with what we've been going through in the past few years, it just to me is amazing and I wish they were here so I can thank them personally. But, you know, I didn't want to just, I know it's been a while, but I wanted to mention that. Agreeing with Dave and Tony, Plum Street seems to be an issue. Uh, because Plum Street is an alley, but it seems like when we did our paving program, our street program, we did do part of it and didn't do the other part, now why I don't know. So, I don't know when we're going to be doing a road program again. I really would love to see us either go down there, check it out, walk it, I know we could patch it up, but it does need some care, it's not my ward, but I don't do wards, I do whatever people ask. And, you know, I've been contacted several times about this alley slash street and I just really wish we could include it or go down there and check it out and see what we could do for the people of that area.
Thank you, Betty.
Thanks, Buck.
Well, just say, just say no, Betty, when the call came in, I think, oh, Dave, did you call that in?
No.
Somebody called in and I met with Kevin, he went out the next day and took care of all the potholes.
Yes.
So we acted immediately on it, we don't know if there's potholes around town. So people say, "Well, I had this pothole for three months," well, if you call the borough, we would know about it.
Right, and that's what I said to some of the people that did call me, because it's not just one person in that area. But, you know, you have to be proactive, you have to let us know what's going on and I don't even want to discuss how they went about it, but anyway, we took care of the potholes, but it's something that I think in the future needs to be addressed. Now, also, uh, the playgrounds, now we know that springtime is coming and hopefully our kids in this town will be able to enjoy the playgrounds. I don't know when the last time was that we spruced them up, but I'd like to, you know, you can get back to me, Mr. Dylan, but I'd like to see when we're going to spruce them up again. Um, give it some attention because some of them are pretty bad. And I just think all the playgrounds in town need to be looked at and taken care of.
Well, every year we go through every playground, make sure everything's working, put new mulch down, new whatever, so-
Okay, so I want the people out there to hear that.
Problem is last year we didn't do anything because of COVID.
Well, last year was, yeah.
So it's like two years now they've been neglected.
Yes, so we need to, you know, address that.
That's what a lot of this summer helps, but maybe it will help us.
Great, are we planning on doing festivals this year?
Right now, we, we don't know.
Okay.
I mean, we don't know what the organizations are going to do. I talked to Carmen Ruiz, it's the Puerto Rican Day, it's their fiftieth-
Fifty, yes, yes.
Anniversary and they don't know if they're going to even be able to get sponsored. It's so hard right now because people are hurting, they can't donate, it's just, it's a tough thing to try to do, so. Do I think it's going to happen? I would say it's fifty-fifty or seventy-thirties, no, it's not going to happen.
Yeah, I, I'm feeling it's not going to happen because even when we do celebrate Puerto Rican Day, the amount of people that come from out of town, it's just really-
Well, our tax collectors texted and saying that Celtic Day is canceled.
Okay, so there you go.
That's the first one.
Yeah, because they're already asking about First Fridays, which I loved First Fridays, especially living right down the street. Uh, but that's another thing, like we get-
The borough handles First Fridays and we're not authorizing that.
Okay, so these are things I'm asking because people are asking and, and I wanted to address it. Uh, another thing is, I know we've been out of the loop for about a year and hopefully there's a light at the end of the tunnel, but I don't know when it's coming. But I noticed that, um, in 2020, our rental housing inspections and complaint inspections that went from January to twenty twenty-one, from one forty-five to thirty-nine and from one twenty-eight to twenty-seven. I know that we stopped doing inspections, or we had to slow down on inspections, but I'm really- I'm really concerned about not starting them up again and not getting on them, because we all know what happens when these horrible landlords take advantage of the people they're renting to. So do we have a plan, or do we anticipate a plan when we're going to start doing these inspections again? Because it's really important to me.
Again, I met with John Miller. The problem right now is, we're not going in because of COVID, but he tried to do a couple, and the lady said, oh, my son's upstairs, he has COVID, or my husband don't feel that we think he has COVID. So we're putting our people in danger by going into these properties, but again, we're looking for, once this breaks, to go in, and we're even looking for hopefully another inspector, because we really need to be on top of what we're doing.
Okay, and...
It's just, it's dangerous right now.
I know, and I understand that, and I'm sure a lot of people out there too, but it's sad that some people will take advantage of the fact that we're not going out there and doing inspections, and they move...
Well, we're doing what we can. If nobody's in the house, we will go in. They're still paying their rental registration, so we keep track that everybody's on board, and you get a letter that says, as soon as we can, we'll be out for inspection. So this is going to snowball. They're saying that anybody that wants a vaccine should be able to get a vaccine by the middle to the end of April. So everybody that wants to get this vaccine, hopefully by the end of April should have it. That's what the word is right now, and there's a lot of people I've been talking to that's saying that there's so much vaccine that's going to become available shortly.
Okay, and then, Mr. Dillon, I had put in, I know that you've been out and you've been keeping up with our emails, but I did put a complaint about a boat in a yard that's been sitting, kind of hidden in the yard, and I wanted to see if you can send me an email and let me know how Mr. Miller ended up with that complaint. Just so I can let the people know that I did follow up on it. And again, I want to apologize again for not being here for so long, and thank you, everybody, for respecting how I felt about not being here. And that's it.
Carol?
Yeah, a couple of things. I met with the fire chiefs and the fire board in February. During that month, we had a call for fumes in a dwelling on Firegood Avenue. I just want everybody to be aware of it. The resident was decontaminating his rental unit, and he mixed bleach and ammonia, which is something you never want to do.
Deadly.
Yeah, well, when the fire company got there, he was outside, just about passed out, thrown up. They went in, of course, with all the equipment on, took their units that they used to measure oxygen and so forth, decided that they needed some assistance. They got ahold of Dow Chemical and the Bucks County Hazers Material Team for additional guidance. Guy was really lucky, really lucky. He went to hospital, he's out now, and we were there for about an hour to ventilate the unit. We also, we had a fire at Grundy Towers back in December, and we received a letter and a certificate of appreciation from the National Fire Sprinkler Association, because it was reported that the fire sprinkler that went off in that apartment put out the fire and actually saved the guy's life, along with a couple guys from Station 50 who went into the apartment. So they sent a letter acknowledging that the sprinkler system saved the residents, and the members of the Bristol Borough Consolidated Fire Company rescued the resident from the apartment. The DCD survey is in, it's 130 pages long. I wouldn't expect everybody in council to read the 130 pages. I've been meeting with the, with the fire board. We have a meeting coming up with the restructuring committee. All the companies have agreed. They're going to be bringing in a consultant to help them work through the process, and in the recommendation from the state is to form an association, and that's one of the primary recommendations. So the fire companies have agreed to that already, and they're bringing this consultant in that will help facilitate that. So I'm figuring it's going to take a good three or four months working through this. In the meantime, I'll try and put something together for the council. I think, if my memory serves me correct, out of the 130 pages, about 15 pages, there's an executive summary that covers everything. Everything else is just pages and pages of charts and documents. For the month of February, there were 41 calls in the fire department, 15 fire-related emergencies, 17 medical-related emergencies, and out-of-town calls. Switching over to the police department, the Bucks County Call for Service, we were down the month of February, I think primarily because of how cold it was and all the snow. I looked at the report, everything is down, so we're at about 672 calls for service. We're normally around 900. Chief Henry met with members of Bucks County and WACP regarding their imaging, reimagining policing program. We will be providing them information requested regarding these programs and policies that we have in place, and primarily, I think I mentioned this last month, that they're reaching out to all the police departments and asking to see what policies they have relative to chokehold, community policing, and so forth. We have quite a few of them in place, we're providing them. Again, it's, along with that, we've gotten some right-to-know requests also. We continue to be challenged with dealing with our mental health population. In one of our units locally, we had, it was shut down after extensive damage was done to the facility by a patient. We responded to assist. Chief Henry will be taking part in a meeting with Bucks County DA and Bristol Township and some community representatives regarding gun violence this Thursday. It's a recurring problem that sometimes bleeds over into Bristol Borough, and the chief has been working very closely with Bristol Township. We've conducted an in-house training of defensive tactics and de-escalation techniques, which is, you know, the de-escalation techniques are all the rage out there today, but this is not something new for us. We've been doing it since Chief Henry's been here. And on the agenda tonight is Garrett Vale, part-time officer, former Jenkentown officer, like to see him hired for court time. That's it for me.
All right. Mr. Devine, you sell a lot, or...
Say it again.
You sell a lot.
No, not a lot.
I guess that, Mr. Salerno, how much do you charge the borough for your services per hour?
150.
150? And how much did you charge the rec authority per hour?
They authorized me for the purchase of the sale of the rink. They authorized me 250 an hour.
So 250 an hour. Is there a reason why you would charge 100 hours more for the same tax base?
Well, just like council authorized me to 250 for litigation, I felt that, you know, putting together the sale of the rent business and property demanded a lot of time over a period of six weeks, and I thought 250 was reasonable, and they approved it. And I'm sure it was substantially, substantially less than if we had hired somebody to handle it.
Yeah, that's all I have questions. I just have a couple when we go over the, our agenda when we vote.
Well, do you have, do you want to bring them on now?
No, I'll wait till it's just part of the motion.
This is going on, thank you.
Let me just say a couple words about the rink. If you don't mind, I hate to, you know, at the beginning of January 2020, the debt service on the rink was like 3.7 million. This is my recollection of what happened. And the, I was contacted by what was called the Black Bears. They're the ones that eventually bought the rink in July, and they offered to pay, you know, our debt service on the rink, which was, like I said, the beginning of January 2020, about 3.7 million dollars. I met with the Recreation Authority and about the offer, and we took into account that the rink needed about $200,000, $300,000 of additional capital improvements, like a new compressor, et cetera. And we just heard that we lost our, or we're going to lose our second highest-paying customer for the new year coming up. So in speaking with the authority, it was their recommendation that the rink be sold. I reached out to the council president, because he is the council president, he does speak for the council, and told him about the offer and his recommendation, try and get 4 million. So we went back at the gentleman, and he said, I agree to 4 million, but I don't want my price out on the street unless you're going to accept it. So that was the non-disclosure concept. I don't want my 4 million out on the street unless you're going to accept it. So with that, you know, we did go and sell it. I think we sold it within six weeks, which was an extraordinary effort. It's now on the tax rolls, so the school district is getting a significant amount of tax revenue, as well as the borough and the county. I think it was an excellent decision to sell the rink, and I think council is to be congratulated for expediting the sale. That's my two cents.
And the other thing, Mr. Dillon...
There's a lot more to it.
That, that email went to all eight council persons?
I believe it did.
That's true.
Well, I was the one to follow it up on it. All right.
Can I respond to Mr. Dillon?
Sure.
All right, Mr. Dillon, I understand what you're saying. The problem is, is that the rec authority is not the recommending body. See, this council is the recommending body. We are the ones that recommend to the authority if we want to sell the rink. That did not happen. And the reason it didn't happen is because we, we share too many hats. And like, you know, I have a lot of respect for you, Mr. Dillon, but you are the manager of the borough, you are the manager of the rink, you're the manager of the sewer. And the problem is, we have Mr. Salerno, who is the solicitor for the authority, he's the solicitor for the borough, and he's the solicitor for the sewer. And then you have Mr. De Giuseppe, who is, I thought he was the council president, and his job was the same as ours, except that he would run the meetings to make sure that, you know, it was an expedient meeting, to make sure that everything went the way it should go in a timely fashion. So the idea that it's okay to call Mr. De Giuseppe and not the rest of council is a mistake on your part, if that's how you feel it went down.
I accept it. I still think it was the best thing for this town. Let's move on.
That's fine. But the other part of it is too, we...
I tried to explain it. 4 million dollars...
You did, listen, you don't got, listen, no one's getting upset.
I got the last word in.
Now, you're getting it in. I'm just telling you, that's the way it went down, that's all. Take responsibility.
Okay.
What was the name of that?
Forget about it.
All right, I'm getting a text from Mike Branigan, who wants to speak. He's out in the hallway, so, Marle, you want to bring somebody to the podium? Take your name and address for the round, Mike.
Mike Branigan, 695 Garden Street. I'd like to ask a simple question as to why Mike Kaufman isn't privy to the rink sale.
All right. I have no idea, Mike.
Well, can you explain it?
Any other questions?
No, I want to, I want to ask that question. I'd like to ask a simple question as to why he's not...
I didn't, I didn't inform him.
So as the council, can I continue?
Okay.
So as the council president, how come you negotiated the entire sale?
Oh, my God.
So how come he's not privy to that, as a council person?
I didn't want him to be privy to it.
Why is that?
I didn't want to. To your question?
As far as him...
Didn't answer it any more clearly than I did.
So wait, so my question is, so as far as representing us in the North Ward, he wants to give us information...
Right.
But you're not giving it to him, because...
He can talk to you after the meeting and give you all the information you need.
But he can't give me information if he's talking to you, because you're not giving it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you?
Yep.
Is that all I'm getting?
That's it. Anything else?
You're a good council president.
I am.
You're useless.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Okay. All right, so that ends public participation. Joe, you have anything else?
No.
All right. Item number two on, item number three on the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the council meeting minutes for February 8, 2021, to accept the treasurer's report for January 2021, to accept the police department's report for February 2021, to accept the fire chief's report for February 2021, to accept the inspector's report for February 2021, and to accept the Harb report for January and February 2021.
I have a second. Second in line, Mr. Dillon, questions or comments? Mr. Devine?
Yes. On the treasury report, I just have a couple of questions. So, Mr. Salerno, you're on here twice. You were on for, one for $3,405, and you're on here again for $16,595. What would the $16,595 be for?
I believe most of that is for the, my services for the PBA arbitration and executive. It covers about seven months of my work on that, so about June to December. I never charged for that, I just charged it in one lump sum.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm just looking right now. Give me one second, please. All right, Mr. Dillon, the Frank Environmental Incorporated, the sludge removal, is that for, that's the sewer?
Sewer plant.
And then how...
I have a contract with them.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority to award a contract for demolition of the Elm Street Houses to Danucci Excavating Corporation for $82,000.
Second by Mrs. Collin. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
President, I'd like to authorize the borough to fund the balance of the demolition contract for Elm Street in the approximate amount of $32,000.
Second by Ms. Collin. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize hiring of a part-time police officer, Garrett Vale, to replace Stephen Markle.
Second by Ms. Collin. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number six.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the repair of the sweeper for $18,000.
Second by Ms. Collin. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
Number seven, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the purchase of, wait a minute, I can't read this. Oh, what is it?
Longower. Longower.
Co-Star for no more than 10,000, is it?
13,000.
13,000. He's got very bad handwriting, our lawyer.
I have a second. Second, Mr. Dillon, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the payment of the balance of the purchase of the bucket truck for borough's amount of $46,000.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
I'd like to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a floor on the other side, I'm sorry.
A motion, there's a motion to authorize the purchase of the new door on the second floor for no more than 10,000.
Second by Mrs. Riordan. Questions or comments?
Aye.
Number five.
We need to adjourn.
Sorry about that.
Meeting adjourned, okay.